This meeting is now called for order. Roll call please.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMillan. And we are rooted.
Here. Trustee, that's the fact of the day. Oh, it's in the back of the case.
I'm glad to lead it. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a public comments? I'm gonna bring the paper up, please. Okay. Someone that has a venture, Chevy Venture, your trunk is open outside?
The plate name is...
Oh, the plate is Venture One. Trunk is open. Oh, Mr. Black, oh, now it makes sense. Miss Sandra Hurd?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Sandra Hurd. I'm a county prosecutor and member of the finance committee. And I wanted to, I guess, I didn't get an agenda for tonight. But I'm, I was here because I understood that we're gonna be doing the third reading of the budget, is that correct?
Yes.
And first, I just wanted to say that the finance committee had been looked after. One of the board members did get us a copy of it, though. We were able to review it, but some of our questions could not be answered as there was no one there representing the village. So we have since then made a request to meet with the village manager and see if we can get some of the answers, questions answered that we have. I won't go through all of them tonight, but basically it's just that in the product that was provided to us, there was no year-to-date information for 2018 or 19. And that sort of says that, you know, these are numbers that are based on back two years ago or something. So that's a concern. Also, just the source of the revenue and, I guess, assurance of those numbers are really sure numbers in the revenue. And basically, on the expenditures, we didn't get to have, get to see like what the total was. We did do some calculation in the meeting and it seems to be close to what the revenue is, but that was something that was missing from the report. Again, I would like to make sure that the board members will make sure anyway that the finance committee is involved in reviewing budget, preliminary budget, and as well, all through the year, the actual expenditures that are occurring. Even if it's a month behind, that's fine. But we don't get to see those. And it's been, not just this year, it's been, we've been asking for reports that shows what our expenditures are, what we are, you know, are we on target from what the budget says? And we don't seem to get that. And so I'm hoping that we can get some cooperation from the new village manager and from the board so that that information can be reviewed and understood by the finance committee. And we won't have a meeting this month. I think someone thought we'd do it on July and December, we do not have a meeting. So our next meeting will be in January. But I did get a response back from the village manager and we have a date that we will be meeting, at least I will be. I don't know about the whole committee.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hurd. Okay. That closes out our public comments. D, D1, act denied in the third reading. The board is providing for the annual budget for the fiscal year commencing May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020 for the Village University Park Cook and Yale County. Is there a motion? Ball by trustee Williams. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Brooks. Questions?
She know I do. Okay. Yeah. It is. All right. Let's get started. All right, I do want to make a correction. I made a statement and I seen the Madam Village Manager a week after this. I want to say that it was based upon, I learned it was some bonds in there. It was not 25%, so I want to be correct about that. But board members today, I did have some time to do my studies on the budget here, so I'm gonna pass down our levy. I, as you know, I'm into numbers. Here we go. If we can pass that down, trustee, as well as the reflect lordliness of a levy that we had passed. Trustee? If you have any action, yeah. Because I was counting for Curtis as well.
He's on the track, he's running it over.
Okay. So, to begin, I just want, as we take a look, I did pass down the amount of money that we're spending. If the trustees can look at page one of the budget. And I wanted to reflect what monies that came in last year and the projections that we have going. If anybody did any addition to it, if you take the 6.2 million funded for the levy from our last levy, which was 5.8, from what I give in front of you, that's a 7.9 increase. 7.9 increase here that we're jumping into. I want us to make us an educated decision here of what we're about to do. And as we can see here, I'm not making it up, we have it here, Will County tax rate calculation, and we see as a levy that came in, 5.8. And the one that's not capped was that bond, that's 1.1 million, which would equal a total of 6.9. So I want everyone to understand that when it come down to the budget, I really agree with Madam Chairwoman Hurd, they were not consulted into it. I want us to be very careful because, again, two years ago, when we came into this, we're talking one of the greatest economic crises that this village faced in its history. And I want to say that we have done a great job by bringing it out of it. What I don't want us to do is to go back into the wrong habits of what we did prior to it. I would like for us to stick to the blueprint that we had. That was the blueprint that we had during our transition. I don't know if trustee Williams was in her transition. I think you didn't get a chance to do yours, right, with Mrs. Townsend? John, okay. So trustee McMullin, myself, but I was, I went into detail because I wanted to make sure that this village continues to keep working. And like I said, I do give credit. Part of this blueprint was given by Mayor Rudes back when he was trustee Rudes, as they worked around for the fact that we need to get these things, or need to stay like anybody household, up there, go trustee McMullin. So he's right on time and validate that we need to be careful on our spending here. So, as I said, I addressed it, that the 25% was indeed, and inflate a number that was a little high here, but as you can see, I passed out the sheet. And with this budget, it would be only 7.9 if you calculate it correctly. What I will say is that this is a balanced budget, but it's the $11 million budget, balanced budget. And we need to be careful of those numbers. And that's what the finance committee wanted to validate, where the numbers that we need to, the supporting documents to show that the village will be receiving this revenue. What I do want to also say is that we are seven months into this budget, we need to focus more on 2021. So I understand that we do want to get some things done. I'm just letting the trustees know that this is the budget for 2020, but, you know, we're seven months already into it. A $1 million bond was indeed paid, one of our bonds was paid. So I want us to be very careful and understand that at this point, we only have enough to really pay payroll, and that's what we've been doing for two years. We paid our bills, paid everything we can initially, and then go into paying the employees up until we receive our funds after April 30th. I want to say that we do have an item on the agenda that is dealing with surplus of the TIFs, but in just in my political position, I just feel, or political ideology is that, you know, I would like to see that money more into the bank instead of spinning towards any increase in staffing especially, because when that money is out, we need to make sure that we have revenue still coming in. DPW, and I'm just going right down the points, trustee, the DPW Police Department and the Fire Department, I will say inside this budget that I did notice that, except for the Police Department, there was a 46, I think that was on page 13, trustees, or 14, we had 49,000. So I'm assuming that would be, as Madam Village Manager did explain, that that would be the officer that would be coming out the academy. And I would love to tell the public that officers are coming very fast, but once again, the Police Academy is closed. So trustees, I do understand, I did call someone that I knew that was a police officer, a ranking police officer, and he said he couldn't even get officers in for his Police Department. So that is indeed factual. But please understand that the hiring for DPW Police and Fire is already the staffing that we had low. Fire Department had staffing that had retired, and we need to put them back on to, so that the overtime does not kill us like it did in the past. The Police Department, we definitely need to get Chief Wilson back up to her staffing. She is still under two officers, as well as the squad cars. But I'm gonna be honest, trustees, I did my due diligence here. It's just unfortunate, we won't have no money to purchase outright leased squad cars until the fiscal year, which is coming up April. So when I keep saying April 30th, I just want all the trustees to know that that is the fiscal year that this budget we're voting on will end. So another thing, I'm hit right back at it again, we have trustees on page 10. Page 10, we have, again, the finance and human resource personnel, that's the $75,000 that's gonna be added to Village Hall. Trustees, we had hired a firm, and they're doing a great job, and part of it is that that's the reason why they're here. And so in my position, and I also say that we have one person here, and she's been doing an excellent job, an excellent job with our village and its finances for this financial crisis, again, that this village has seen in its history, is Ms. Celia Kelly. She has been doing an excellent job, and we're paying her, she's making sure all the bills are paid. I would not trust anybody knowledge to come up in here outside her and this firm who we have hired, that has a great reputation, to keep us on the right track. Now, the only thing that I would say is that later on down the line, then yeah, maybe we can discuss, but I want everyone to remember that in 2016, we had a very heavy front office, meaning that there were seven, eight people working in the Finance Department for the Village University Park. We're just not that huge to be taking, you know, to be doing. So I just feel that with her, her helper, they're sitting in the office with her, as well as this firm, and they have been doing a great job. Audits are right on time. And trust me, if something went wrong, they have no stake in the game. That means that if something's gonna go wrong, you know, and they can't be corrupted in real form or fashion, I don't mean to use that word, but we have someone independent making sure that our money is being taken care of correctly. I want to go into something, even if anyone even noticed that even when it came to the travel expenses, Madam Clerk does a lot of training. And her, you know, I don't mean to put you out there, Madam Clerk, but they got you $100 less than us, you know? I just, I just want to, you know, say that that's my position. So trustees, I'm gonna close out by saying that as far as my position, that I want to make sure that our priorities are in the right place. The priorities become a little, I mean, we've been moving along, and I have to say, the mayor's been busy, the village manager's been busy, she's been here two months. I just want us to be careful here, like I said, and this is my opinion, it's an $11 million budget. Madam Village Manager definitely, probably, you know, she's, will be able to answer it. But I'm going to make a couple motions tonight that I feel that in some form, that no matter what, if this passes, board, I just feel that some changes need to be made. It was very clear that no changes was made to this budget when it was in our packet. I thought at least that we would be a little further. I definitely thought that the joint meeting in the Finance Committee and between the Board of Trustees would at least happen, because, you know, this is, this is the budget that they work with us with, and it's a process that all of us have went through as we try to make this village right. We don't want no inflated lies out there no more. As of, one time, a trustee said we're $42 million in the hole, that's by far true. We're not even 20-something in the hole in TIF management. No, that's not true. But we are on the right track, but I just feel that in this process, we have citizens on the committee that work with us, us as trustees. I have three fellow new colleagues, and they're really working hard, they're looking into some things, they may have some questions, that's why I'm coming back off the mic. But before I get off, Madam Clerk, I would like to make a couple motions into, tonight, and I'm making a motion that, number one, I'm making a motion to amend the budget by doing the following. Striking page 10, the finance and human resource, 75, excuse, I'm sorry, trustee, $75,000, I'm striking that. I see also on page 10, our IT specialist, he was another one of us that was here in the financial crisis, unless it's something that we don't know. Making a motion that we put it back to 92,523, his original salary. We go to page 13. Manager Payne is no longer here. I want to strike this Director of Public Safety. I was opposing in the first place. Our village manager is our Director of Public Safety, she's basically our Commander-in-Chief of this village and a comradesess with the mayor. So if we can strike that, and when it comes down to it, I believe that with the police contract, I did a review, I'm also former president, Fraternal Order Police. That would fit around the range of 125. So that's a $10 increase for the chief, for the deputy chief. I feel we would not be hiring one before April 30th. I'd like to strike that 115 out of there. Lastly, page six. We have, if I could just ask, which trustee am I? Am I trustee one, two, three, or four? On page six, so we can put it for the record. I don't think I'm the number one trustee in the world. So we'll just say I'm trustee number two. Trustee number two. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Trustee number two, you'll see 5,300 for our travel revenue. I'd like to take that, put it on page 14. Turn of page 14, trustees. Taking my salary for travel, not gonna use it, use them, just not before, April 30th. Put that towards our part-time police and crossing guards. And that'll be the end of me and my motion to amend the budget, Madam Clerk. Oh, oh, wait a minute, Madam Clerk, I have to, the numbers correct. If I can say, I did, I add that up. Made of numbers reflect, on the final expenditure, it'd be $11 million, 863, 976, and zero cent. Yes, ma'am, I would do that.
And that's your motion? Is there a second to this motion to honor amendment?
I second.
Second by trustee Belle Jenkins.
Mayor, may I make a photograph for legal purposes? In the position of the trustee, may I say that the trustee and the attorneys are here, he does not accept it, but we cannot transfer dollars for his salary into another location. He cannot accept the dollars, but the dollars remain. But all the, all the trustees must accept the same salary. I under, I mean, I understand what they're saying.
You're correct. You're not transferring your money to different funds, that's correct.
You're saying I can't transfer my travel expenses?
To a different fund, that's correct.
That's okay, Kathy.
And may I just say one other thing? And that is, under the position of the, position of the deputy, I mean, John Payne's position, the money had been taken out, but we had some indications, we took the money out of it, so the line item is blank. It's just the title has to be taken out of the series that's on the budget. But we took the money out of, out of it, it's no longer in the budget, it's not there.
All right, I agree. I'm just, I'm just sick of looking at it because everyone here knows I hate it, and, you know, like I know Madam Village Manager, it's really, Public Safety Director is maybe one or two in the South Suburbs. So...
It was our intention and an amended position to, what you're talking about, is to take it, to show that we have, will physically amend the budget to take the title out, but we took the money, in fact, out of it. And we just, if you look at it, the money is gone, but the title's still there. And once we do the spreadsheet, the balance would come up with the deduction as such, but this was a final reading prior to this.
Okay.
Mayor, may I be, I'd like to see, just so you, you're the one, you're the one that goes over these finances, am I correct? All right. The things that trustee Brooks has came up with, could you explain, do you agree with those things, or can you explain anything? Everything that he, can you just...
And let me just say something.
Excuse me, we got a motion and a saying on the floor, so we can't entertain any other questions. Roll call, Madam Clerk. The motion made is not a legal motion, so you can't take any action on that motion as made.
Legal motion on which bar, counsel?
That you cannot transfer your travel funds into a different fund.
So... Okay, so then that'll be plain and simple. May Madam Clerk, on the last of that, can we strike that where the trust, my, my travel expenses be transferred over to the Police Department, part-time crossing guards, and... Okay, thank you. Everything else, I, it remains the same.
With that amendment, now we need a second.
I second.
I second by trustee Jenkins. Roll call? And this is for the amendment.
Roll call on the...
On the changes. On the second amendment.
This, this roll call will be to strike the salary, I'm sorry, the travel.
Yeah, this, this, my motion, this one was gonna be to, for the finance, strike the finance, human resource from the item for 75,000, for the IT that his salary still remains as we had in the first second reading, was 92,523. And the Public Safety Director, that the Chief of Police, that we, that 10,000 to that. And the striking of the Deputy Chief, no zero, zero spuns, because we won't, we're not hiring one. So that's it.
That kind of expires, trustee.
I know.
All right.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden.
Both sides.
Trustee McMillan.
Both sides. All right, Madam Clerk, now take a motion. There a motion on the amendment, on the changes?
Yes.
Now, that's the intended change, not the next. So we're good?
Yeah.
Just pass.
Now, now with the motion for a roll call to approve the budget. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
This is to approve the budget.
And the amendment.
Yeah, you got the, this is to roll call to approve the budget as... Trustee, we've got a motion.
Now, just roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both no.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Pass.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden.
Both sides.
Trustee McMillan.
Both sides.
We are rooted.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Mr. Mayor, that's coordinates 2019, that's 35.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item D2, a resolution approving a settlement and release agreement between the Village University Park and Blue Lake Holdings, Inc. Is there a motion? Maybe we should hold that for closed session and discuss it, and then when the agenda is closed, that's what it buys everybody of the nature of the settlement, or if you want to do it now, that's up to the board. Settle as ready, board.
I think counsel just said something, because I do want to find something else. Yeah, make a motion to table this until after executive session.
Roll call. Motion by trustee Brooks to table, second by trustee Williams. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides, I'm sorry.
Trustee Bowden. Trustee Bowden.
Both sides.
Trustee McMillan.
Both sides.
Okay, so, uh, both sides to table, second session.
I think we're at the table D3, since they are related as well.
Is there a motion to table item D3 to executive session?
So, Mayor.
Move by trustee Brooks. Second by trustee Bowden, roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides, second.
Trustee Bowden.
Both sides.
Trustee McMillan.
Both sides.
Mia Ruth Davis.
Item D4, first, second, and third reading in order to approve a formal redevelopment agreement for TIF, uh, five?
Seven.
Seven. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
What, what is the motion for, uh, Mayor?
Item, item D4 on the agenda, first, second, and third reading in order to approve a formal redevelopment agreement for TIF seven.
I, I got a motion.
Move, motion by trustee Williams, there a second. Second by trustee Bell, roll call.
Question.
Question. Trustee Brooks.
Okay, Mayor, I, uh, you get it, you get it? I'm sorry. Oh, well, Mrs. Orr, can I give you this as well? Mayor, can she approach? Thank you. I, I don't, but Ms. Morgan, I swear you can have mine when I'm finished. It's, uh, the redevelopment agreement. Everyone, first of all, just very quickly, I'm gonna keep this point in mind, if they could just open up to the first page, show why I have an issue. If you read at the top, well, I had it highlighted here, it says, it, well, cash, the TIF, what, what, we do see it, right? Fifteen percent, fifty, excuse me, 50% 15 year, right? So that's number one. So I just would like to say that when Mr. Good came up here last time, that I told you that I knew I seen it before, there it go. That was from my previous board. Uh, but I just, quick question, couple of questions. First page of this agreement, maybe counsel can answer this, who is this agreement with? Because we don't have no name. We're always looking, when we're looking at these packets, no name.
Well, this village board, as I was instructed, did not want to do a master agreement for the entire TIF. And so after negotiating with the developer, we determined that he could not find a user unless he had an incentive agreement. We said, this is the maximum that you can incentivize, 15 years, as opposed to the original request for 30 years. But it's contingent upon this village board approving the developer. So what we've tried to do is we've tried to put a cap on what a developer can offer, what a developer can ever request from this village board, other than its approval of the exact development. So we're doing something unique. We're approving a form. In the past, the village has been asked to approve a master redevelopment agreement for whatever's brought into a TIF, which in my mind, is not a good idea. You need to know how much you're committed to and exactly what you're doing. Now, the plan, the tentative plan, as you point out, and you gave a picture of the first plan, the developer here is here to tell you. Now, by approving this form, you are saving the maximum incentive you would give for a development of this size. They then must come back before you with regard to the actual development to make sure it conforms with your plan. If this isn't a perfect idea, I think it's a lot better than a master development plan, where you were asked to just blanketly say, yeah, do whatever you want, we'll give you the TIF for 23 years. We've cut it down, we've made strict rules, and they have to come to you before the plan. We are told that without an incentive, this property owner, developer, will not be able to entice anyone to come into the village. I can't address that because I'm with you, I'm not with the developer. So that is why we tried to take the original demand request and really narrow it down.
Ms. Orr, I didn't see, is, uh, right, so I don't see where it says, no, yeah, I get in my notes, it says, no cap. How much TIF dollars is the village agreeing to pay?
15 years. 15 years.
Okay.
Without regard, it was a question of cap versus time.
But I'm talking about here in this agreement.
I, it, there's, it's a cap of time.
Cap of time?
A cap of...
So you're saying I misread it?
No, because you have a note that can only be for 15 years. You didn't misread anything, I got that.
Okay, so that, and the ca, and the note, is 7% interest on it, am I correct?
Correct. Now, according to my research, it doesn't mean it's good. I'm telling you what I found out.
Right.
With a, uh, note that is, has no guarantee behind it, because it's only as good as the developer pays their taxes and does it. 7% today is a good rate. The developer wanted 9%. We absolutely said no. Uh, my investigation with various underwriters, 7% for an unsecured note is not unrealistic.
Okay. Um, trustees, paragraph, so you follow me when I ask these questions. Paragraph 1.1, the developer attempts to inquire certain real estates considering a blank acres identified as partial blank. An industrial structure no less than blank square feet at a blank project. What is the project? Uh, this would be the, the first page of the redevelopment agreement.
As you say...
Article 1.5.
As it states in the resolution, this is simply a form. When the developer actually, you know, until we have a real developer in here, and they have a plan in here, um, that they have to come back to you for approval. What this form does is, don't ask me for a nickel more, this is as good as it's going to get. And it took us quite a few hours, as our village manager can state, to pull it back from the original request. It doesn't mean you like it.
Yeah, Ms. Orr, please understand myself as a legislator, and the reason why I'm questioning is probably, you didn't draft this, right?
Oh, I did.
You drafted this?
I did draft it.
I'm not, I'm talking, point of order, I'm talking to Ms. Orr.
And I drafted as a form.
Okay.
Which caps the max of 15 years on the redevelopment.
Okay.
And I presented to you as a new concept, rather than, as originally proposed, and as the village has done before, these master, uh, redevelopment agreements that covers all the acreage. So what we're saying is, this is a form, this is as good as, and you may not like this, I'm just telling you.
Right. Okay.
This is as good as this village is ever going to offer to anybody, if you bring us a development we like.
So you're saying, because that last time, there was a comparison sheet, and the trustees, I'm sure you remember this diagram. Uh, where are we at? If y'all can turn to, was it, simple tax rate competing areas? Romeoville, and, let me see, was this, was this the area of trust? Yeah, this, where, where we were compared of the tax rate for a developer to influence. So you're saying, where University Park, we know that is, 8.6 is, that's what we have right now, but am I correct, when TIF four rolls off, tax rate may go down a little bit, Ms. Orr?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's part of, that's part of the way in which, quite frankly, the incentive, as you can calculate, I don't have to tell you.
Right.
The incentive by time will go down, because not only before this is done, are we going to go off on TIF four, but TIF five comes off in '24, '25.
Right.
So that all the projections in the world, in doing an incentive agreement, now, in my mind, is better by eliminating time rather than money, if you're with me.
Yes, I'm, I'm following.
Got it.
Yes. Uh, okay, because...
I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it's hard, you get, you get it, though. You, you get what we're saying about the TIFs coming offline.
Okay. Uh, and once again, you say this is a form, because again, I look at...
Yes, understood. It's a, it's a unique concept for us to try to do development without being put between a rock and a hard place. And this village board has been faced with people that come and say, if you give me a bazillion dollars, I'm going to build a Taj Mahal.
Right.
And, and to say no is not easy. So what we're trying to do is cap it at the get-go. Don't even come here and ask for more, because you ain't getting it, that kind of thing.
Right.
I don't know if this is going to work, but you've picked up on a very good point.
Right.
By capping the time, given the fact that our TIFs are coming offline.
Right, right. That, I mean, I've been doing my homework, right?
The interest rate goes down, oh, well, because the tax rate goes down.
Well, I learned from you. I learned from you.
Thanks.
Uh, just, can I ask one quick, quick, this is not to blast Mr. Good, I'm just asking questions. The cost, number four, what is develop, developers' investment in a project, what the project would cost? Only reason why I'm just asking, the total cost of the project, and I know you're going to say, it's a form, trustee Brooks. But including the cost of acquisition, and the cost of construction, and the soft cost of incurring connections with the developer of the project requiring an investment, I mean, 1.7, investment by the developer, no less than blank, so...
I can answer that.
Okay.
On, on our project, we can build a building anywhere from 300,000 square feet to a million six.
Okay.
So when we come to you, as, as, as stated in, in her document that she created, is that we, this is just, again, a form. We have to come back to you with several things for approval. We have to come back to you with the name of it, of the company we're working with, the size of the deal, the site plan of what we're going to do, so you can approve all of that.
Okay.
And the approximate cost of the project. And, and, and then hopefully you'll, you'll look at it and say, this is a project that, that we want to have in our community. And then at that point, you approve it. What this allows me to do, and we have a, we have a user right now, that's, that's thinking about building about 400,000 square foot plus building in the community, and there'll be 300 to 400 jobs, and they want us to break ground in March or April, which is why we really appreciate you, uh, taking this to this board and you so quickly. Um, I can provide them with this form and say, when you're ready, because I'm under an, an NDA, a non-disclosure agreement, I can give them this form and say, this is what the village is willing to provide to you, the max. If you're okay with this, we have to disclose your name, we have to disclose the project, and we have to bring it in front of them at their next meeting.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful to be back here in a very short period of time to be able to say to you, this is the project, this is the company, and these are the jobs for this major user that we want to break ground on in the spring, because they want to be in the building by the end of the year. So we are, that, that, that's right now where we're at, and I appreciate the hard work of, of your attorney and your staff.
Never compliment the attorney, they'll never believe I was working for them.
She's tough. I'll tell you, she is tough, I will say this, it was, it was a unique experience working with her, she's very... But, 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 but she's very right in terms of the concept of what she created, and we can look at this. So, we appreciate the, the hard work.
Ms., Mr., Mr. Good.
Yeah.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes.
Uh, and you probably know why I'm just, just a little hesitant. But I, I'm also not too concerned, because I have, um, Madam Village Manager here that is no soft cookie along with Kathy Orr.
They're good team, though.
Yes, they are. Uh, but was this, when you gave us this, it, because this is what I, I'm concerned, the other taxing bodies? Uh, when, when they seen this, that I just showed the trustees, the 15, 15 year, was that just something that you were, was that an idea? You're a businessman, and I understand, everybody's a business, but I'm just concerned.
When I was here, like, I'm 68 years old, so I have a memory that's not as good as it used to be.
That's okay.
So I went back to my office, and I said to the person in my office, I did a presentation to the board.
Okay.
To a board, right, to this board, a while ago, it's a while ago.
Okay.
And can you give me a copy of it? So I have a copy of it here.
Okay.
And, and, and the point of that presentation was to say, this is what a TIF is, this is all the things we talked about here, but on one page, it's 50%, but when you, when you turn the page, it's 75%. So...
And I also see 21.
So, well, I don't think we did 21%.
Or is that, or, no, no, I'm talking about the years.
Oh, 21 years, yeah, we dated for 20 years. All right, the, the village come back and says, no, we're going to give you a maximum cap of 15 years, we've accepted that. But this was meant to show the, the, the school board, an alternative. Alternative one is, is what happens at 50%.
Okay.
And this is what happens at, at, at 75%. We didn't come in and say, one or the other. And, 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 and...
But we had a trustee that was adamant with you, that we wanted 15, and I wanted to make sure that we stayed at 15, that's where we at.
Yes.
Right.
And that, that was very clear to me in the meetings, and we agree.
Right.
So I think we have agreement on that, and, uh, and, and, and we appreciate you considering the document that, that was prepared.
Okay. I just want them to know I'm not crazy, but I also want to give you the opportunity to explain what the trustees are looking at, and what we had seen, and why I was adamant about the 15 year. And we do, and ladies and gentlemen, it is, well, no, well, I seen 17 in here.
No, 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 uh, it's 15 from the time it's built. And if it was 17, you've got the wrong draft, it was 15, the note is a 15-year note.
Okay, hold on, trustees.
And you're not going to sign it.
I think from the sign, from the time we signed the agreement, because it has a 24-month period that has to be activated.
But there was a form that you had submitted that was 17, and we rejected it for the 15, but you, you actually have time to build it.
Article eight term, oh, the last day of the 17th calendar. Okay. This agreement should be upon the execution of the parties, terminated upon the first occurred payment of the note, or the last day of the 17th calendar year from the date of the note.
That gives us time to build the building. These buildings are 12 to 18 months' construction.
I'll take the gas pedal off you right now.
That is appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
I yield my time, Mayor.
So I just want to say that I, uh, I dissected this document to a T, and also got some advice from, um, a few other village managers that I know. And I believe that this puts us in a very good position. I think the approach is extremely, uh, beneficial to the village, the way that it's written up. It takes the liability out of, um, the way that things have been done, and a lot of other villages have done in this village in the past. Um, so, I appreciate, uh, Trustee Brooks for ensuring that we're, you know, you're putting us in a position to get the best deal, because you have been very outspoken in regards to, uh, this situation, which I believe is why we're in a position now that we have a very strategic approach that's gonna put us in a, in a, in a position to thrive. So I just wanna say that I'm a research junkie, and when I see documents like this, I look into it, I get advice, I ask, I ask questions, and I even have my own, uh, lawyer kinda read over some things that I didn't understand. And then when I spoke to some other village managers, they said, wow, that's a pretty good, uh, position that you're putting yourself in to come into it, so I just wanna make sure I, um, put that on the record. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins Bell?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor Ruth Edmonds?
Both sides for development.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance twenty nineteen, dash thirty-six.
Okay. Uh, we need to go into executive session for a few minutes, and the people do not have to leave. Is there a motion for executive session?
So moved, Mayor.
The motion by Trustee Brooks, second by Trustee Williams. Roll call? For purposes of, pending litigation. No, no, just pending litigation. Okay, is there a motion? I mean, roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins Bell?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden?
Both sides.
Both sides. Both, both sides. Alright, we'll be back in a very few minutes. Ready session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Brooks and Williams, second by Trustee Bowden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty. D two, a resolution approving a settlement and release agreement between the Villages University Park and Blue Lake Holdings, Inc. Is there a motion? Moved by Trustee Williams, and Trustee Jenkins, second?
Second.
Second by Trustee McMullin. Roll call.
Both sides.
Okay, Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins Bell?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Both sides.
Both sides.
Mayor Ruth Edmonds?
Both sides.
Mr. Mayor, that's resolution R twenty nineteen, dash thirty-five.
Item D three, first, second, and third reading in ordinance of the Villages University Park, Will and Cook, Illinois authorizing distribution of surplus from the special tax allocation fund of TIP number four. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Trustee Jenkins, second by Trustee Williams. Roll call.
Any question?
Roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins Bell?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor Ruth Edmonds?
Both sides.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance twenty nineteen, dash thirty-six.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Brooks?
Second.
Second by Trustee Williams, uh, and Jenkins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't want you leaving before you're ready.
It is, I mean, nine o'clock, right?